I'm gonna call to order this, uh, city council work session being March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, three P M. Invocation will be given to us by, uh, council member Mark Mata. Those who are wishing to join us can do so by standing up and join us for a moment of invocation. Mark.
By your head. Father God, we thank you for this day you give us, Lord Jesus, and we thank you for this opportunity that we had to just come together, Lord, and we just pray that, uh, you may just have a hedge of protection around this building. Father, I just wanna lift up the, uh, families and the victims of the school shooting in Nashville yesterday, Lord, Father God, just pray that your peace and comfort would just be around those, uh, those people, Lord Jesus, and that, uh, your Holy Spirit would just be felt there. I just pray for today, Father God, that you may just, uh, give us the wisdom and knowledge that we need to, um, take care of the business for the city. Just pray that, Lord Jesus, we would just make the best decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
May we be seated? So we're gonna be on item three, presentation of the Texas Rail inland port and discuss rail truck facility project. This is a research on the prospect of a rail truck transload facility within Hector County, City of Odessa. With us, we have representatives with, uh, Texas Rail inland port. And presenting will be, uh, Taylor Rich. Can bring up anybody you need to, uh, to do this presentation.
Sir, the, uh, the slide deck that I emailed you, you have somewhere that you conveniently pull up?
Yes, can we get his assistance with that? Do we have somebody that can help him with? Do you have a slide presentation?
Yeah, the one that I emailed to you yesterday.
Okay, that, that wasn't a good deal.
Well, I'll take the hit on that one, so. You have my laptop, I don't know if there's an easy way to put it up on the screen.
Can we get somebody up here to help him? Any familiar team? Oh, there's a, there's a, there's, there's the man right there, right there. There's our guy. You're trying to hide back there, Mr. Parrish. We just have technical difficulties here. That's what I said, that wasn't a good thing. Amanda Cindit didn't mean I looked at it.
Second to last. The second to the yes, that one. Appreciate your patience. Some of the stuff is easier if you've got the pictures. So, um, thank you, city council, Mayor Holden, for giving us a chance to speak with you all. Um, we've been working, uh, I'm from Site Logix Corporation, we've been working on behalf of, uh, Roger King and Pipeline Solutions. And so I wanted to give you a little bit of a background of what it is that we do, how we've been here to help, express the gratitude that you've given to Roger and Pipeline Solutions to date, talk about what our next steps are in this process. So Site Logix is a company that, uh, we are focused very heavily in things that are freight rail and freight intensive businesses. Uh, and we work a lot with industrial rail assets and real estate, and also with shipper supply chain solutions, which is what we're talking about here with Roger. And so this grows out of, uh, the Strategic Rail Finance Advisory Practice, which dates back to the mid nineteen nineties. So we have a core team of four business partners that we all have deep roots in finance, rail, economic development, and business operations. So, uh, at the risk of reading the slides to you, you know, I brought them and you'll now have them available, you can skim them in your leisure for, for the details if that's helpful. Um, we also work under the same brand name, you'll see, the Strategic Rail Capital. And so this is a FINRA regulated investment arm. And so what this does is when we work with people like Pipeline Solutions that are looking for additional capital to get something to happen, you know, in, in the ten, fifty, hundred million ranges where a lot of the people we work with like to operate, they're looking to deploy that money. So we have the relationships with the investors to help connect them to projects like this so that they're not cash starved. So together, Strategic Rail Capital, Site Logix work together to integrate financial and operational and real estate aspects of these freight centric businesses like what Pipeline Solutions is involved in. So they have several projects where, or products where Roger King has explained they're lacking in the access to rail truck transloading to serve the Permian Basin market. And so there are facilities here, there's quite a few that do do transloading between rail and truck, but they generally don't accept the kind of, the, the, the certain particular hazmat products that these companies need to work with. And that leaves companies like Pipeline Solutions and a variety of others in the Permian Basin reliant on truck direct. So that drives up cost, it tightens capacity, let limits growth. So, uh, Pipeline Solutions first started talking with Site Logix because they figured if they have that problem, then there's other companies in the Permian Basin who are also limited that way. So could they start a facility that would support multiple customers? And so, uh, in that regard, they wanna colla- creatively collaborate with other players in the market and have brought us in to help with that. Why us as advisors? We work with clients to help them identify when projects are viable. That means that they can profitably be a supply chain solution for a real business problem. And then when we walk them through that, if there isn't there, there, as I like to say, then we invite them to give us the opportunity to make the decision of do they participate with us as equity partners going forward. So this role I'm here today as advisor to Pipeline Solutions at this point, as it progresses, then it will be their decision if we partner further. So what have we achieved so far in doing this advisory consulting engagement? Well, first, if you look at the picture across the top, try and make it clear what it is we're trying to do is bring things in by rail, in their case, in liquid form and tank cars, transload it locally here into truck for delivery to the Permian Basin market. So we had to validate what the competitive market is for truck rail transload coming into Odessa on the Union Pacific Railroad, because that is your railroad in this community. And then compare that to the other alternative for shippers, which would be by B N S F Railway. And so we had to look at, well, what's the core market? And you'll see on the left, the purple picture there, we're looking at anything that you can get more than one trip a day out of a truck. So the big one is two round trips a day, the middle one is sixty, and the smallest one, you see, that's like four round trips a day. That's where you are strongest from a, a market competitive standpoint, if you have to go by truck. You look at the picture on the right and you can see, well, where are the alternatives if somebody is going to use a B N S F point? And you'll see Lubbock, Carlsbad, McPeyme, and San Angelo, that's kind of a ring around Odessa. But you are in the strongest place, as we've seen, for Union Pacific transloading. And then there is at the edge of that purple circle, there are some options for shippers to come in by B N S F. But what we wanted to see is, is there a good defensible market niche and is Union Pacific going to be a valuable player here to help with rail truck transloading? And so going back to the question of, is there a there, there, we were very encouraged by what we saw. So the second thing that we did, um, some very deep analytics on some very comprehensive databases that we were able to acquire of what is actually moving in the core market, and then compare that with what are the existing shipper options for rail truck transload. So you can see in the, in the map slice, we identified over twenty different locations and then went through categorized and looked at, are they open to third parties or are they just for that company's customer base, which is the majority of cases? And then you can see a couple of snapshots from our analysis. We use the TransSearch database, which what matters about that is of all the databases that you can purchase that have truck movement history, that gives the most granular resolution, because we don't wanna see that there's eight billion trucks moving between point A and point B as much as we wanna see what products are moving, where are they moving from, where are they moving to, and what quantities. So that allows us to start narrowing down to see what shippers might potentially use a new transload option based on what are the products moving, so we could drill deeper into that. So I'll pause here. Are there any questions that leap out to the council?
Council, any questions?
So we're talking about things like hydrochloric acid?
Yes, so we observe that. And a huge amount of that does come in by rail today. So some of the things that we've learned at this point, you do differentiate yourself in the region as being a great location served by the Union Pacific Railroad network. But the railroad is the railroad show of hands of those who have actually dealt specifically with railroads. They're very challenging because they are running their business and they have to optimize their network for their business practices. So that means you have to respect their interests and you have to work to flow traffic they desire into their network. And that's part of what our rail experience helps us do is communicate with them on terms that work for them. Another thing is that there is some overlap between your territory and what B N S F Railway could provide. And so what that means is, we, if we wanna help the market and we wanna help shippers here, we need to focus on building supply chains that connect points here with points that are not part of the B N S F constellation. It could be other railroads in the east, at the south, going up to Canada, you see the laundry list in there. But if you try to get from a B N S F point to a Union Pacific point, usually the two railroads don't wanna play together and you find that you can't even get a rate quoted. So again, that's respecting, they each have their business models and they have their requirements to their ownership. And so when we respect that and flow with it, we get better results. So the other thing that our data validated is, as you would know, this is an industrial consumption market principally driven by the Permian Basin oil fields with a smaller agricultural market focused on livestock and to a lesser extent cotton. So the data bears out what we would all know, that's great, but it leaves us with a few questions. And this starts getting towards where we would definitely benefit from support and help from the city. So things get categorized into broad groups in our data. And chemicals is key for Pipeline Solutions as a, as a commodity group. But we see products that are being imported from Los Angeles, from Oakland, California, all truck, all the way here. We'd love to talk to the shippers who are bringing that product in and see, can we help them generate a rail truck solution so that it's not being driven all the way across from the west coast? We looked in the minerals category, believe it or not, water is included in minerals in this database. And so we really wanna better understand the water that is moving in and out of the market. And then we see substantial volumes that are classified as waste and scrap flowing into Odessa, flowing out of Odessa. We understand C M C and the scrap metal that is coming out of here, okay, that makes sense, but what is flowing in? I don't know. And it's flowing in by truck, it's flowing out by truck. So these are things where, within the community and your relationships, if you can help us find the right people to talk to, we wanna understand that. And then we're very interested in understanding what's driving the large trucking volume from El Paso to here. Presumably it's imports because El Paso is not a huge production center in match with the volumes that we're seeing coming. So we see these things in the data, but we don't understand what they mean and we would like to learn more. So that, that, that all goes back to ultimately what we call market taking. In other words, existing freight flows that are coming into or out of this market that could be converted from all truck to truck rail. So we call that market taking. As opposed to where we think, and this is where we still wanna learn more, is what we call market making. And so this is where we wanna learn more and we think that you may be able to help us. So what are the commodities that businesses here are struggling to move? And who's stuck depending on truck, because trucking capacity is at a premium? Try to, your, your, your growth is limited by how many drivers you can hire and everybody's fighting over the same driver pool. So that's one part of it. Who do you know that's, that's struggling to get their product moved? The second is, what non petrochemical markets does the city of Odessa really wanna stimulate? Help us understand where you have put resources and attention that you, we can flow in and leverage with you to, to help build and balance the market that's outside of the pure petrochem. And then in that regard, I've listed some commodities on there that I wanna ask, are we on track if we look deeper into these things? You know, the surplus natural gas, waste or raw water, sour crude, um, hay feed for livestock, cement. These are things that we see moving that is, if you look at that list and with your experience in the business community, you say, yes, I think that that's where you should be looking. You say, no, you're completely wrong. Site Logix, go look over in this area. We would love to hear that from you, because we know, we know from the data, we know, we know from talking to the smart folks at Pipeline Solutions and some of their business partners, but you all have been here a lot longer than I have. And so I welcome that input. And these are where we call it market making, which is if there's a stranded product, providing transportation options that don't exist today, so that people can get these products to a saleable market and unlock the stranded market. So that's where, again, supply chains are about value creation. So if we can figure out how to get stuff here to somebody who values it more, we see that's gonna be beneficial for the community. And we definitely wanna make sure that we are hearing and working with your efforts to date. So, um, I think at that point, what I'd say is the next steps that we wanna do and where I think we, I haven't asked for assistance. So we wanna review and incorporate any further studies or research that the city might have on, on the economic front that you could provide and share. Likewise, we'll make available to you the work that we've done to date. And then the second is, can you help us connect with shippers that could potentially benefit either by converting all truck moves to rail truck or unlocking stranded markets? Who should we be talking to that we may not have already spoken to? And with those pieces, you see, I changed the colors here as we get further into the future. Part number three here is, we wanna refine all this information, improve our approach to picking a property where this would take place and develop the infrastructure modeling and the financial modeling of how this operation needs to work in order to be viable on its own, as opposed to, you know, I, no subsidy. And then we can look at demand forecasts, identify suitable sites. At the end of it, we like to say, it, it's Site Logix, it's Strategic Rail, we are interested in bankable projects. Projects that are profitable on their own merit, therefore they're properly structured beneath the market demand. That's where we wanna get to. But is this making sense, what it is that, where we would greatly appreciate your assistance?
That's your presentation?
Yes, so, uh, I don't know the best way to facilitate ongoing discussion, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, do you have any questions, suggestions of how?
I have just one, just one, Mayor. The, um, just to add to your presentation, uh, the building of the supply chain and specifically inland ports, um, I think, uh, I think it'd be good for Odessa, but that is also an active business model across the United States around, yes, the Gulf areas. Um, it's not just a unique idea, um, it's a popular idea. There's a lot of activity going into this across the country.
That is correct. And, and, and the way we look at it, there's this significant amount of the products that could be coming from overseas and coming to here. And then as we see beneficial cargo owners that need to bring those products in or get them out to market, then that starts creating the shape of how you would want to structure an inland port so that it has true market benefits. As opposed to investing in a site without knowing if there's, we don't like to do the build it and then they will come model. We're not fans of that, because you can see other locations where they've done that and then it never came.
Yeah.
But if we are building it because the demand is there and it's coming from overseas, uh, look at the pipe that's consumed here, how much of that is imported pipe? That's where then, yes, now we see a value chain, we see a demand, now we can work with you to correctly structure that port so it is of value to the users.
You know, one idea comes to mind is that we could, you know, um, get you together with our, or does a chamber, uh, and then they can, uh, question some of their, uh, their members that are in the trucking industry. I'm trying to think of, I mean, we have so many trucking, you know, trucking, uh, companies here. But which ones are outside of what's, you know, the natural gas, sand, things of that nature? Uh, you know, we're, um, so that's one idea, but, you know, open it up to the dyes, any, any suggestions that we can do?
And you have other cement manufacturers still bringing cement into the market? Because it doesn't meet the full demand? That's what I say is, is it just impossible to meet the whole demand? Is, is there somebody who would wanna be bringing cement in potentially even from afar away as overseas?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sir, I'm trying to understand how you go, we've got a lot of companies bringing stuff in by rail.
Yes.
Sorry, ah, that's better. People can't hear us, they use microphones. Uh, so we've got a lot of people bringing product in now that are offloading from rail to truck and then truck to the field.
Correct.
So what value do you add to that man's business?
So his book of business is covered. If you're Unim and Sand, you have your requirements covered. But if you're Pipeline Solutions, he does not have his requirements covered because the facilities that are here were not set up to accept the kind of hazmat that he needed to bring in. Not that it was incredibly dangerous, but so much as that the, that was not what the facilities were interested in handling through their, on their throughput basis. So there's room for more than one in the market and most of them out here were very proprietary to that customer. There were a few that were not, but they were not, they're, they're apparently not meeting the needs of everyone in the market because there's quite a few that are not using them.
I'm not sure I understand a word you just said.
I apologize.
I apologize, you're way over my head. I've only got one college degree and it's not very good. So, uh, so give it to me, give it to me in English, please, sir, I'm sorry, I'm just teasing.
Fair enough. So, um, and Roger, feel free, if you wanna jump in on this based on your experience, try and move product in.
Sure, defer to me when you get chewed on, that's accurate.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't chewing, I was, I had to make light.
No.
I don't understand.
I think the simple answer is not.
Roger, Roger, can you come up? Because we, we, you have to introduce yourself so we can have it on the record, because we have a lot of people that are zooming in.
Fair enough.
And so they need to know, well, who the heck is this guy? So just give us your full name.
My name is Roger King and, uh, we've.
And who are you with?
Uh, Pipeline Innovation Group, and we've, uh, contracted or retained, uh, Site Logistics to help us. But there's a lot of follow, uh, just to answer, uh, Mr., Mr. Thompson, is that, is that correct?
Thompson, yes.
Thompson, Mr. Thompson, uh, your question is, there's a lot of smaller people in, in this industry that aren't served by, like he said, the proprietary folks, the, the big people that have their own spur or their own, their own space. There's a lot of guys that are still having to, smaller businessmen, that are having to truck things from port cities from Houston or from Galveston or actually transferring things over from the Dallas Port side of it and, and having to truck them all this way. And so our niche was like, we, uh, couldn't bring things in for our own use by rail and we started talking with other, other folks in this market and saw that there was a demand for this. And that, and that's literally what we, where we started from this, is we knew we had a demand for it and we figured other companies, other businesses in the Permian Basin also had that.
So people seek you out to help them with their supply chain issues?
Well, we're gonna have to turn that around and, and make sure that people understand we can help them with their supply chain issues. We're trying to create a market here and that's what Taylor's defined as, here's our market. If you look at that purple concentric circle, this is where our, we're best suited. I mean, uh, and that's, that's the point. How do we facilitate more business in this area?
So for an example, are you talking about, let's say there's a small chemical treating company here in Odessa, Texas?
Okay.
And, um, right now they're limited to what they can treat, because they're getting everything trucked in.
Right.
So they could bring it, this, bring it in by, by rail, bring in the volume that they need and expand their business also.
Because at a certain point, there are not more trucks to bring more into, that limits their ability to grow as a company.
So, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but so to put it, here's the deal, in nutshell, you'd be, you'd build a terminal, they'd bring it in by rail instead of truck and then offload it.
Right. And, and specif- specifically.
A hub is what you're looking for, made of hub.
I'm just trying to understand it.
So, so basically this is, here, here's the concept. Uh, Roger, speak about why, why Odessa strategically, uh, located, you know, to be able to suit, to be able to service those smaller companies? Because there's an example, there's a gentleman here who, uh, he sells, uh, truck parts, every type that you can find on, on a diesel truck. So his business is in Houston. And so he's shipping everything into, into the Houston and Galveston area, Galveston, and everything he trucks to Houston. So the market opened it up here to West Texas. So the thing is, is that he can bring it into L A, but then he's gotta truck it from L A to Odessa. It's faster from L A to here, but getting it from overseas to L A takes longer. So he can bring it into, into, into Houston, because it's, it's faster on the boat, but it's an extra ten days to get it to Houston to Odessa. So what he did is he opened a facility here, but he opened up his own hot shot. And so that's the way he's doing it. On the offsite, I wind up meeting him and I ask, and I propose this to him and he says, his lies, oh, eyes opened up, he goes, wait a minute, you think that I, I can ship it on train here? He goes, that means larger volume at a lower cost. And I can eliminate what I'm doing in, in, uh, in Houston and I can, I can sell it at a larger volume and still not have to raise incredible price of mine, my profit, profits go up, because he's sending it to retailers. So, uh, so Roger, tell us why Odessa's a, a, an integral part?
Well, I think you kinda just did, but to, to go backwards and reinforce this, I, I wanna have an excuse here, I don't pronounce names very well, but it's, it's Mr. Mata, correct? Okay, so to, to, I went to West Texas State, I didn't go to U T Permian Basin, so I apologize.
Aggie, huh?
Well, it's kinda half Aggie, right? I won't say what I usually call myself, but half Aggie is kinda, is how I do it, but.
That's okay, we'll let you get by that.
The, the, I appreciate that. The, uh, the, so many of our chemicals that we use, you know, for, for oil and gas independence here in the, in the U S come from, obviously from Houston. And so what you're talking about is there's, there's all kinds of innovation that occurs in the Permian Basin with chemical, with, with everything. I mean, everybody's aware, if you, if you're in, in energy industry, you understand how much innovation really does go on in this area. And you're taking guys that have been shut out of the market because they're not a big company. And you can think of big company X on the chemical side, and I won't say it here, but they limit what comes in and out because they control that spur. And what we're proposing is small chemical company that comes up with a special blend, a special, a special blend for a polymer or a prop or something else to go in to increase our efficiencies. Now they have access to that rail to come directly from Houston. So when big company says like, this is really innovative, but let's drop our price so cheaper is better, now all of a sudden the innovation is pulled up to that same level of the big guy that's been squashing them just on, just based on price alone. So that, to, to Mr. Mata's point, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is give the opportunity or a level playing field and consolidate some, some, some volume to help all of Odessa. A rising tide kinda lifts the boat and, and, you know, Odessa serve, uh, the Permian Basin and everything that's going on. There's still a lot of innovation that goes on, on a daily basis. I'm, I'm just amazed at how much oil and gas volume and knowledge base grows every day. I don't know if there's a statistic to that, but I know there's one in the medical field where they say that the volume of medical knowledge I don't know if there's a statistic to that, but I know there's one in the medical field where they say that the volume of medical knowledge doubles every 97 days. And I would say it's, I would propose it's very similar in the oil and gas business. All the things that I'm sure y'all here that are just amazing to me, like, I never thought of that, you know? And the, all that innovation, in my opinion, or a lot of that innovation goes on here in this area. So.
Rich, what, so you're, you're asking for the cities to help you to find, uh, vendors out there in the service industries, you know? Are we missing anything? You know, are they shut out of the market? What are they bringing in? Find out what's coming in from El Paso.
So, you're right. And, and so if you imagine for a second, the, the oil producers that are not large enough to get a guaranteed space on the pipeline to get their product out of this market, what do we need to facilitate for them to be able to then use rail to get a better pricing and a more secure position in the market? Because, uh, what we saw when North Dakota started loading oil trains, like full train load of oil in that case, there was a lot of places they were able to buy that crude that otherwise wouldn't have been able to access it. And that did a lot to lift the Bakken field and, and provide an opportunity. So we want to understand is, is that kind of market making opportunity available here?
Yeah.
And what has to be put together? So some of this comes from what Roger's company does as far as the way they can help pre-treat this. But then the next part of that is, so where is the real opportunity? Because just pre-treating it and getting it into the pipeline here might not be the best answer for these folks. That might not be the best yield. And that's what we're trying to help them do is strengthen their business. But the longer term goal is what does the city also want to foster? If you have a willing partner here who's willing to invest, not just in, I'm gonna take it off a rail car, put it on a truck, but I'm willing to engage in doing some other processing to make the product more valuable. What can, what does the city trying to help foster that that can benefit from a partner who's willing to take some risk, put some equipment in, do some things?
And, and I, and to add to that, I wanna go back to what Mr. Connell said about how this has become a big, a big, um, a big push in certain areas because it, it is, the, the port and the, and the hub concept has become really big because of all the supply chain issues we saw on the west coast and the east coast. And us folks in the middle got starved. I mean, think about all the times you went to a store around here and you couldn't get a part to, I mean, we had equipment that we were robbing parts off of to shut down something else because we could not literally get parts. And that is all a result of that. So everybody's had to really rethink things and how it, how, what modal, modal, intermodal transportation really should look like coming, coming forward. And, you know, back to what Mr. Connell said, that's why we've put down the, the routes. Once we just established that there was probably a demand here, uh, we brought someone in to say, you know, site logistics to say, yes, here's the, here's the quantity and here's the information that shows this demand, but we also have relationships with other ports. In the state of Texas, you have to have a blue water port, a deep water port, and then, uh, uh, to be recognized as a port eventually. And you have to have that connection with a, with a, an inland port as well. So we have those two things in a memorandum of understanding with those two items. So talking about, we've done the research, we've had someone come in and do the research and we've established those relationships to put something in place. So what is it we need from the city? We, same thing. We need the information to share the information and then, you know, start pushing this project forward. We made a commitment to do that and now we're asking for exactly the same, a commitment back from the city to help us move forward with that.
Okay. Okay. Well, the thing is, we all need to start putting our thinking hats in who we need to direct. So who are we gonna direct this, uh, Mr. King? Do we do it to Rich or who do we direct?
I, I, you know.
Either way, both of us.
Either, either way, yeah. We're, we're all in, you know, and I wanna recognize it that we have Chris Luhon with us that is, is here in this area. And so we try to work as, uh, you know, one is, one is three.
Mr. Luhon is a, is a, is a business owner here.
Yes, sir.
And you're, you're in the trucking industry. Okay. So, okay. So we can direct everything towards Chris?
Yes.
That's fine. Yes. Or either, any, any of us. It's kinda, you know, the same thing. We're, we're trying to work as the, uh, you know, ob- obviously Taylor's a much smarter one. So, uh, I, I won't speak that between me and.
You're spreading terrible rumors there.
Between, between me and Taylor. I don't wanna speak for Mr. Luhon, but, uh, but, but any, any one of the three of us, we're all involved in this kinda on a daily basis. So.
So, one more, one more question. I'm sorry. Uh, so what's the availability of the rail for you to obtain? I mean, there's only so much, there's only so many spurs.
Right.
Are you gonna build, will you build one? Will you take over an existing one? Tell me about that process.
Oh, good, good point. And that's, again, I, I wanna speak directly to what you're saying. That's not my forte. That's not ever been my specialty is, is that. So that's why we spent the money, uh, to go out and, and hire and work with site logistics. I mean, uh, the, the answer to that question is, is yes. I mean, do we build one? Well, maybe. Do we buy one? Well, maybe. I mean, all of those things have to factor into, once we establish what the market is, I mean, is it best to have the spur? Is it best to build? So, you know, there are available spurs. There are some unused spurs. And again, it's, what Taylor said to start off with is going back and convincing UP, here's how this helps your business model. So that's where we're at in this phase is, you know, there's multiple facets of what we're trying to push on at one time. But we need to, we need to accumulate what that market is gonna be and then present that in a, in a beneficial way to Union Pacific. Here's what we have. And then the, the, you know, again, the idea with, with retaining site logistics is they have a way different, you know, if we're working here at a local level, that's a difficult thing. But site logistics has those connections on a national level to go straight to, uh, the higher ups at, at UP.
So you know, you know people at UP that will actually call you back, right?
Yes. Based on some of the work that we've done, one of, one of our, uh, big projects for a long time was we were the lead advisors to the ports of LA and Long Beach on the Pier B expansion, which was the largest on dock rail expansion they'd done in their history. It was something like a five to 700 million dollar project. And so in, in working with that, we've had direct contact with senior people at both BNSF and Union Pacific Railway in their marketing and commercial departments. So we, we have a long history of working with both railroads. There's a lot of trust between us and them. And so we've been able to collaborate well with them because we listen to them as opposed to telling them what they, we, we want them to do, which is what they're used to getting from a lot of other players, which is always challenging for them to respond to because again, they have a whole network to optimize, what, some 30,000 mile network around the country. So, uh, we have the relationships. We have the good relationships, I should add to that because not every relationship they have is, is easy to work with. But to your question, Mr. Thompson, do we build or buy? The answer, as Roger said, is when we know what the market needs, if there is something suitable that's out there, yes, we can grab it. If there's not something that's suitable, then we would have to build it.
Sure.
But we're basing it on what do people need, not the, let's build it and see what happens more.
Yeah. What is, uh, the acronym B S N F?
BNSF is originally, when the Burlington Northern Railway merged with the Santa Fe Railway, they became BNSF. And so I don't know if they still call it Burlington Northern Santa Fe or if it's just the acronym.
Yeah, it's just the acronym.
So what are the deep water ports? We, most of our natural gas is being piped down to Corpus Christi and they've deepened that port down there. Is there any possi- is there any value there or how's that play into it?
I, 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 Taylor probably has a better answer for it, but we've already chosen, but it doesn't mean that you're confined to that one port. It's important to have a port relationship. After that, you can kinda do what, what you need to do for what the market is, what the market bears and what's best for the market, so to speak. So it, at, at times, having one port relationship gives us the credibility to, to approach a Corpus Christi or, uh, or a port of Houston or a port of New Orleans. So.
Okay.
And then, and then we would base that on which ports have good relationships, obviously with Union Pacific. So yes, you can get to Houston. You can get to New Orleans. You're not necessarily going to go to Gulfport, which is Kansas City Southern, right? So that, that's what starts to define the universe of the ports that you work with. But I'm not limited by the pipeline network in this case, right? So if the pipeline network drives you to Corpus Christi going by rail, especially if you're talking things like crude petroleum out, then I can go to, direct to a refiner or I can go to a port that makes more sense. So we have a little bit more latitude to answer the customers' requirements, be it what Roger.
The only reason I say, I mentioned it is because it seems like most of, if I'm, if I'm not, I might, I could be absolutely incorrect. But my sense of it is, is that the pipe, if, if government would let us ship out of Corpus Christi, those pipelines are pretty full. So I'm just wondering if there's not a, a need there for, uh, these, uh, natural gas producers to, uh, if the pipelines are full. Then this might be another solution. I'm just thinking out loud.
Which we, which we know they are, we know they are. I mean, it, you, you're saying you're making an assumption, but we know there's not, there's not adequate pipeline capacity at, right, at this time. So.
And, and, and to me, as somebody who's got this much comprehension of the hydrocarbon business, not, nothing compared to this guy. But if there's gas that's being flared and you're struggling to get gas to a market, that's where I go back to market making, which is if you can get it into a 33,000 gallon, uh, LPG tank car, what can you do? And then talk to the people who are struggling to find a market for this and say, well, does that then turn us to getting it liquefied and into a rail car? And then move it, does it go to Mexico? Does it go up to the northeast for the heating season? Well, I mean, what's, what does the market benefit from if you know you got a place that you can get it to, to get it on a railroad car? And the infrastructure's a place to get it compressed, to get it on the rail car.
Yeah.
These are the kinds of questions where.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer, but if you're flaring and if the pricing is upside down, then I wanna be talking to people who are struggling with that problem and say, let's, let's work through, what's a good solution?
That's a good question. That's a good analogy. Cause yes, if we're flaring, that means there's not enough, uh, pipeline.
What can we do with those BTUs that we just burned?
Okay, so Rich, let's wrap this up. So, uh, basically go in it once again, so, uh, city secretary can write it down so we can all get on it. Specifically go back through the bullet point of what information you are seeking from the city of Odessa where we can help and connect you with.
So, and, and you can see this is on, it's on page eight of the slide deck. So the area businesses that you have contact with, who is struggling to get product moved?
Okay.
What non-petrochem markets do you want us to help you stimulate? Be it agriculture, be it is there something where you, you're, you're making a move towards some sort of manufacturing and so. Tell me what it is that you are trying to accomplish.
Okay.
That we can then add to that effort.
Okay.
And then looking at this list of products, and, and again, this is to stimulate who we should be talking to. If it's right, if it's wrong, no pride of authorship. It's just the deepest understanding I've got to in a market and a territory that you will always know better than us.
Okay.
And then if you have done any other studies, uh, on the economic development or the transportation front, if you have any other studies that you would be able to make available, and then we're happy to share the results of ours.
We can, can share this with Beecham and see if he can help us.
We could, yeah.
Those are our real requests.
Yeah, they'll have the wealth of information on this.
Yeah.
And we can follow up with everyone, have the conversation, let you know what we learned and how this is developed.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll wind up, uh, going into MoTran. We'll go into, uh, uh, with Beecham who represents Techstock. We'll utilize, see if the chain we can help us. But we'll gather that information and then we'll, uh, we'll contact, uh, Chris Luhon and then we'll send that data. If there's any additional follow-up data, then we'll do that too.
That would be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item four, uh, presentation of sports complex development feasibility study. Matthew?
Mayor and, mayor and council, um, I'm asking to table this, uh, discussion, uh, presentation. Our consultant had, uh, flight issues coming into Odessa today, so I'm asking, uh, for it to be tabled until April 11th.
April 11th?
Yes.
Counsel, can I get that in the form of a motion of tabling, uh, item four to April 11th?
I move to table item four, presentation of sports complex feasibility study to April 11th.
I have a motion by council member Martha, second by council member Vazquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Anything else you wanna add to that?
Well, I'm number five, too.
Oh, you are? Okay. Uh, item five to discuss the bid award for food beverage management at Ratliff Golf, uh, Ratliff Ranch Golf Course.
So this is the bid award, um, for Ratliff Ranch for Lynx Golf Course, um, to award the bid to them. Um, so it's just to, um, approve that, um, as well. So it'll be going to council for the consent agenda.
Yeah, and we're needing a term as well, I believe, coming years.
Okay, so let me ask you, I thought that the, uh, we at the last meeting did, uh, did we not accept the bid?
Uh, yes, we accepted the bid, but.
We accepted not to turn it down.
Not to turn it down, but we didn't officially accept it, but what we're looking for now is a term of contract. How, how many years is it gonna be? Is it gonna be another five? Is it gonna be two? What's it gonna be?
Okay. Matthew, have any, uh, suggestions or any options or recommendations?
My recommendation is to stay with the current contract, which is five years and then seven percent.
Seven, what do you mean, seven percent?
So the seven percent comes back to the city.
Seven percent gross.
Gross revenue, yes.
Okay. So you wanna, you wanna do an extension for five years?
Yes.
Is there any language in there that if the, there was issues at one point?
Correct.
There was a recommendation for us to not renew it.
Correct.
If we get to a situation like that within the five years, there's something in the contract that allows an out for either or?
Correct.
The city and?
Yes.
Lynx, there is?
Yes, yes, there is.
Ma- mayor, there is. And, uh, we will be going back through the contract once more, uh, with Matthew, with Mr. Christman.
So counsel, I wanna open up for discussion among the council, uh, and everyone, are they comfortable with the terms and the recommendation that, uh, Mr. Christman is, uh, is, uh, proposing, uh, the five years?
Yes, as long as there's a out for any kind of reach contractor. Yes.
Is he out? Is, uh, is, uh, notification within 30 days, 60 days, uh?
I believe it's 30 days.
It's 30 days both ways, I believe, but we're gonna, it's gonna be a whole new contract's what it's gonna be. So we'll take care of it.
Okay.
And just for the council's notification, I was out there last night. I read, uh, the, uh, the, uh, what was it? The proposal that they, that the Lynx offered. And, uh, really they, they're not asking for very much. A couple of doors put up and some things like that. Uh, I was out there and in fact, I took dinner home to my wife last night because she's not feeling well and chicken strips. I mean, but they were, they were terrific. There are a lot of people out there, like, you know, that golf course and that restaurant are a good revenue source for the city. We just need to, we need to work it a little harder. And so I brought, just so you know, I, I brought Matt some, some pictures, which, uh, he didn't see. He was out there yesterday. Let's, we need a little paint, a little fix up out there and so. Uh, but, uh, we have a great opportunity, I think, to do some good work and, and a lot of people out there last night. So lights in the parking lots and things like that will really help us a lot. Cause you know, we've got Desert Ridge going, I mean, Yukon Ridge going in diagonal across the street. And, uh, you know, if we put a little investment in that clubhouse and turn the volume up, you know, you might make a little money.
Oh, yeah. We need more rounds of golf, that's for sure.
We had 38,000 last year. That's a lot of rounds of golf, mayor.
That's good.
So we just need to get it to 40 and, and that, that bar, that, that bar and restaurant will do fine and won't make our cut. So I'd make a motion that we, that we accept the bid as presented.
Okay, so there's a motion for a, uh, of accepting the bid for this.
This is just a discussion.
It would be on the next.
Oh, it's gonna, after the next council.
We should do a little consensus here to talk about.
Sorry, sorry. So, so basically, these are the terms, is to, uh, basically accept the, uh, the, uh, the contract for an additional five years with a seven percent return.
Correct.
Okay, so that's gonna be.
Seven percent is what's in, what's in?
What's in it now?
Yeah, seven percent now.
So we have a consensus, Mr. Councilmember?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a consensus and we'll move forward with it. You guys review it and then put it on the, uh, I guess we're putting it on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. We'll have it ready to roll two weeks from now.
All right. Matthew, anything else?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, item six, discuss the terms in the second agreement with Butts Recycling Incorporated. Mr. Kerr?
It sounded like you had thought we'd done it. I thought we did that last time. Yeah. Oh, boy.
Well, you're siding.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Uh, what we want to discuss with you today is, uh, terms that we have, uh, discussed with, uh, BRI, Butts Recycling Incorporated, uh, regarding the recycling option for us out at the, uh, time machine. Uh, Butts, Butts Recycling was not able to make it today, but they did ask me to go ahead and proceed with the, with the terms to discuss with you. Uh, we do have Jesse Rodriguez and Jathan Escondrez and, uh, Maria Cabio with, uh, with our staff here as well. So we've met with, uh, BRI and, uh, we've looked at, uh, things that we could do out there at the location. Uh, the, the operational description, we would staff and, uh, BRI would staff and operate the time machine.
Now, the the operational description, we would staff and BRI would staff and operate the Time Machine, recycling recycling collection facility on Forty-second Street. So that's where the operations would be entirely. That's where we would receive all recyclable materials that would be coming in for Odessa. Material received at the Time Machine will be hauled to BRI in Midland. That's their processing facility there. We will process, they will process, bail and market recycled materials at BRI. Initial modifications for this to occur, we will be removing commercial collection bins around the city and that's ongoing right now. I believe they're about half half the way on this. We will be removing, closing the community collection sites. I think we've already pulled pretty much all of those, I guess, so the community collection sites are no longer available. We will need to build new fencing securing the Time Machine site so that this is so that we don't get contamination in the collection area. So BRI will monitor during the collection hours and they but the site will be secured so that we don't end up with a lot of trash coming in. Removing divider wall inside the existing Time Machine building to accommodate the thirty-yard recycle containers. The purchase of additional, I'm just going right through it without. You're seeing it here. So the purchase of additional thirty yards recycle containers. We need four more containers to operate as as discussed. There will be seven containers on the site and then four additional containers for swap-out and use. Removal of the baler from the shredder building. That's his baling baling machine that belongs to BRI. So when we we have two options really that we are discussing with you. The only difference in these is who does the hauling, okay? So under the proposal from BRI, the first two items there are one-time costs. So for us to make modifications to the Time Machine, estimating about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. For the removal of the baler, BRI is looking for twenty-five thousand dollars to have that removed from the from the shredder building. Now we're talking the annual costs. Those are one-time costs, the annual costs. We have operating the Time Machine Monday through Friday, eight to five, and Saturday from eight to twelve. That's five thousand dollars per month for sixty thousand dollars for the year. The processing at their facility, separating any materials, baling and marketing, that's twenty-five dollars per ton. For this estimate, we're using twelve hundred tons a year and that would be thirty thousand dollars for for one year. Hauling the pools, as as they're called, seventy pools per month are estimated. That's three hundred seventy-five dollars per pool and that's three hundred fifteen thousand dollars for a year. That would add up to an annual cost of four hundred and five thousand dollars. The term that we are talking about are two years with one one-year annual extension option at the discretion of both parties. In option B, the one-time costs are the same, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the city upgrades to the building and fencing, adding more containers. The BRI removal of the baler at twenty-five thousand, so the one-time cost, a hundred fifty thousand. The annual projected cost to BRI would be for the operating of the Time Machine, again, five thousand per month for sixty thousand annually. And the processing of the product at twenty-five dollars per ton for twelve hundred tons per year, thirty thousand. So the BRI contract would be for ninety thousand a year. This again would be a two two-year contract with one annual extension. The city would need to contract the hauling separately in this case. The city would need to go out for bids for hauling the material to BRI in Midland. There is some potential opportunity for less expense there. We have spoken with some vendors, there are several vendors that would be interested to do so. And they they have indicated cheaper costs than what we have seen with with the BRI contract. BRI is okay with us doing this if we wish to proceed this way, but we will need to go ahead and put that that request for bids out. It's a separate contract. So the total con total on ongoing annual cost, annual annual, is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so we can proceed. That would end up with two different contracts. So we'll probably come to you with the BRI contract while we're getting the contract for hauling ready. So those are the terms that we have discussed with BRI and the options there. We'd be happy to take any comments, questions, if you have any other ideas that you wish us to pursue or et cetera.
All right, guys, anybody want to weigh in on this?
Well, at the end of the day, what kind of savings does this mean for the city of Odessa if we contract these services out to BRI?
So potentially, our net differential, so the savings that we see from not doing commercial anymore, we already have sixty thousand budgeted. And so then when you bring in what we see as a savings from commercial, we were looking at about a hundred thousand. And that's if people put in brown containers at about seventy-five percent of the yellow containers that were out there that recycles. And and then we have about forty thousand dollars savings in not going around and picking up the collection sites. So we were seeing about two hundred thousand dollars of potential budget, either money already in the budget or budget reduction in budget expense. So the the net difference would be anywhere from two hundred and five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Any other comments? Any suggestions, any on the on the option A or B?
And the public can still recycle, they just have to take it to the Time Machine. They're just not not gonna have the community shop off.
So all all recyclables that city would receive would be coming to the Time Machine. And then we would take, they have to be hauled from there to Midland to be processed.
Well, I like the option with us contracting out the 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 transportation because BRI has got to pay for their transportation costs. They got to put a margin on it, so. We're saving the margin by did a contract ourselves. They'll let us do that. I think that's the better option. Just my thoughts.
Any other comments or opinions?
Yeah, I favor option B.
Myself.
That is the one you were referring to, Mr. Thompson, option B?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, come out?
Option B, sounds good.
Well, I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Thompson. B.
I know it's tough to do.
Kurt coming out.
I pulled it out there.
Okay, so Mr. Kerr, let's so let's go back over this. So we're gonna be paying BRI twenty-five thousand to remove their balers?
Yes, sir.
What's gonna happen to the facility that we have there?
The shredder building?
Yeah.
So we have through the budget to purchase, to engage a architecture firm to design a new building for us so that we can have that building taken down.
Well, the three hundred fifty thousand that we did last year wasn't for designed, it was for designed to build a new building.
Yes, sir.
So we as the council still need to revisit that that back again. I'd like to have a discussion, see what we want to do forward. For the reason and this is why is because we do have solid waste that do not have a facility, do not have a break room, do not have restrooms. And and so and I have to agree with them with their opinion, their assessment of what they feel is prioritized over that department. And I have to agree with that assessment. We do need to clean up. I think that I think there was at one point, the the city did look at it and it was about two hundred thousand. So there's something that we as the new council need to do as we go into the spring, go into the budget and we need to discuss and what we want to do with that with those monies and go forward because they do need a facility out there. Also on that, is there any way that since we budgeted that money, could we wind up using that money for those improvements that we need, fencing, things of that nature, or were you looking at other other dollars?
So the two hundred fifty thousand that you authorized, as you said.
Was it two fifty or three fifty?
Two fifty was the amount that I that I'm aware of.
Okay.
To engage in a design firm in order to design the building. The the shredder plant is not, you're not gonna pay for demolition of the shredder plant with that. And we recognize that, but that'll happen after we get the the newer building going. So the two hundred fifty thousand is probably gonna be needed for the design. I don't think that we will have excess monies there if.
So the thing is, is that do we need to redine the new shredder plant? I mean, new shredder building? If if we're doing everything on the Time Machine? Do we need to spend those two fifty for a design if we don't go into the Time Machine?
Well, yes, sir. I think that that would be a separate issue because that is, as you said, we will be we will be moving our operations out of the shredder building. So right now, we do tire services in there. We do work on our trucks, some of our trucks, some of our maintenance on the trucks in there and do some welding and things out of that building, I believe. And as you said, we don't really have a common training facility for them and that type of thing.
Okay, well, that's a separate issue. All right, then. So it looks like we have a consensus for option B and we'll wind up going forward on the next on the two weeks. Okay. Mr. Kerr, anything else on this?
No, sir. Well, just we'll get the contract started to to be bring to you and we'll go ahead and bid out the hauling services so we can get that discerned as quickly as possible and have that ready.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item seven, discuss renewal of motor motor rotor primary one software. Mr. Parrish?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
So the first one that we have here for the P one software, again, this is a twelve-month renewal that will start on April first of twenty twenty-three. That'll run to March thirty-first. Again, this is the public safety software, which includes Motorola Records and CAD systems. We're looking at a price tag of three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. And again, that's for one year of maintenance, software maintenance.
Counsel, any questions? Any recommendations? Anybody want to radio? We are paying attention. Okay, consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you, sir. That was quick and easy, Mr. Parrish?
I'm I'm two more. I got two more for you.
So you're the one who built the agenda.
Unfortunately.
Okay, sir. So we're gonna move on to item I, discuss replacement technology equipment in public safety vehicles. Go ahead, sir.
So what this is, is every four years or so, we try to replace the equipment in the public safety vehicles. This proposal is for sixty replacements. That includes laptops, mounts and everything that goes with it. Again, we're looking to upgrade or the model that we're changing to unfortunately does require another model of docking station and mount that's built into this cost. Also, it it from GTS and their people, they'll come in and do the installation. The price tag on this one is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. It includes some upgrades that we're needing, thirty-two gigabytes of random access memory, which helps it run smoother. And we're also building our our five G footprint and getting our new equipment five G ready.
All right, we'll pretend we we know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, all right.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
These are going into the police vehicles.
It will be a combination of police and fire.
Police, okay.
That'll be an upgrade to thirty-two. What are you running now?
Sixteen.
Whoa, that will be an improvement.
It will.
Somebody does understand, doesn't it? Okay, we have consensus on item eight? We're gonna move on to item nine, discuss the main scheduled desktop laptop replacement for twenty twenty-three physical year. Mr. Parrish?
So what this is, this is a combination of all the technology that we replace for administration throughout the city, computers, monitors, laptops, everything that they ask us for that we replace on a four-year, a four-year cycle. We're just making one big purchase all at one time so that we can get the replacements out for the city. And the price tag on this one is one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five big cents.
Counsel, any questions on the item nine?
Straightforward.
Seeking a consensus? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for those presentations. We're gonna move on to item ten, discuss the outlawing of plastic bags used in stores. Inroom city manager, Ben Up, you got the you have the floor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to have Claudia Ortega with KOB, the director of KOB, step up and discuss this.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon again. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Claudia Ortega and I'm with Keepo Odessa Beautiful. And what I wanted to give you just a little bit of a, what everybody knows, the issues that we're having with those plastic bags. I wanted to give you some of those pictures that we have collected throughout the years so that you can, I'm sure you've seen them. Just wanted to show you a little bit of those bags that they get caught in the, as you can see, vacant lots, mesquites, fences. That's something we have battled for years. We hate them. I'm sure everybody does not like to see them. There's some more pictures there. And of course, I discussed, you know, where they get stuck. They don't look good at all. Anybody that comes to Odessa, that's the first thing to see us. We live in Odessa. Those are things that we see every day. And right now, especially now with the spring coming in, you can see it even more. It also makes the area a place where you see a dump site, people, you know, anything. We all know that if it looks bad, people tend to bring other things, unfortunately. That's just the way it's been for years. Another thing that I wanted to show you, it's actually made a comment on the Texas Tribune, an article that they had on the livestock dying by ingesting the plastic bags. It's a huge thing. And it's not just in West Texas. It's all over. This is an issue that we have everywhere. I think that's one of the things that people like to focus just West Texas. No, I think it's just that it's more flat and we can see it more, but it's it's an issue we have everywhere. One of the things that we, it's an issue, like I said, everywhere. So what KOB does and what our focus is, what can we do to be part of that solution? We know it's a problem. So we we it's been about three years ago that we started distributing reusable bags to several of our local stores. As you can see, Meals on Wheels is one of them, Food Bank, and they have used them. I mean, it's actually has made a tremendous impact on them. Farmers Market, downtown restaurants, churches and schools, they use those. We like seven, over seven thousand of those reusable bags is what we distribute annually and they've been using them. In fact, one of our coworkers did Meals on Wheels the other day and she said that that's the first thing that they saw, that they're using those reusable bags. I don't know if y'all can see, those are the reusable bags that we have. They're insulated. They're very strong. So they have, another thing that we do promote is to make sure that people clean them because that's one of the issues that we're starting to see that they don't clean them after they use them. So this is a very sturdy bag that we we distribute. Okay. Another thing, KOB is about, again, finding a solution to the problems that we have. For us, it's little prevention, proper disposal and of course, reducing waste. One of the things that we have is the citywide cleanups that we have, like the Don't Mess With Texas that we recently had this Saturday. As you can see, we had a hundred and thirty-three volunteers that picked up that much trash, three thousand, three hundred and ninety pounds. So we have people out there helping us remove those items. And that, I don't know if you can really see that bottom picture, there's actually some of those bags there that they were able to remove with a stick that they have to remove those bags. And that's just one of our citywide cleanups. We also have the fall sweep. We have adopter spots that they're all over the city and we have volunteers that actually take place on it. As I mentioned before, that is an issue that we have everywhere. I don't know that in the research that we've done and the people that we talked in other affiliates, they have tried to ban the bags and that didn't work. They have tried to do other things like, for instance, Austin has, after doing the bag ban, they came, of course, overturned that. They started using a bag that was thicker than the one we have. That's what they're implementing in that community. So like I said, every community is different, so we just. So like I said, every community is different, so we just find what works for every community. One of the options that I've seen also in other communities is that they charge for the plastic bags. You know, that's an option that people can have. I know people are not going to be happy, you know, I mean, but that's something that other communities, I'm just kind of giving you options that other communities have implemented throughout the years. And that's one that Dallas actually is doing right now. The other one would be to incentivize, give a credit for those that bring their reusable bags. That's another way that we can actually limit some of those bags that people are using. But at the end of the day, our thing is always, and we promote this with all over the city, it all comes down to us. Every person is responsible for keeping their community clean, you know? So if you're going to the store and you're not properly disposing of that bag, you know, I mean, I see it everywhere. People are walking just, this morning, I saw somebody walking, they pull something from their pocket, throw it on the floor, then pick it up. So it goes back to taking pride of our community, you know? And I feel like it really does take a village. It takes everybody in the city to be part of that solution. So for us, it's always been, again, there's other options, of course. I don't know what fits Odessa, till this day, we don't know. That's why we promote for everybody to do the right thing. And one of the things that I wanted to come and talk to you about is what we continue to do. I mean, that's something we continue to promote, educate, we go into the schools and tell the kids, the kids certainly know that that's not something you're supposed to do. So we do educational campaigns throughout the year. I don't know if y'all seen our banner that we have, actually billboards that we have. There's one on West County Road that says Real Texans Don't Litter. UTPB has our little receptacles that say the same thing. So again, goes back to saying, you know, everybody's responsible for keeping our city clean. There's, yeah, there are winds. We have winds in West Texas, I know that, but if we didn't throw our stuff on the floor, then those winds won't pick up those, those items. So again, I'm just here to, to say what KOB does to be part of that solution, you know? It's like, it is a problem, but it's a problem that everybody has and I don't feel, I don't think that anybody has really found the precise, you know, solution to that. I think we all keep working. We, I talked to affiliates all over, you know, keep America beautiful, keep Texas beautiful and we all have the same issues. And I just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of what we're doing and we continue to do, you know, so that you can see that it's not something that has not been brought up and we, we know that that's a problem and we try to find a solution to it.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Ms. Ortega, did I understand you to say that there, there is state law that prohibits cities from banning plastic bags?
Yes, in fact, well, the way it was worded. In fact, Austin was one of them, Laredo was one that they tried it and they overturned it because of the Solid Waste Management Act.
The AG sent out eleven letters to eleven cities that tried to ban the use of plastic bags.
What was the basis that the, the courts used?
Well, in the city of Laredo, it was actually because the, the city's bag ordinance in Laredo actually preempted the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act, which means this bag that when you carry food out or when you carry your groceries, it's actually considered solid waste, not a container, as you would think. But so that's one of the things that, that, one of the reasons that Laredo was basically overturned by the Supreme Court.
Could we, could we put, put our brains together and find a way that we could do it through the state legislature to redefine a, a plastic bag?
Absolutely.
And the contents?
Absolutely.
And, and basically say that it's not solid waste, but-
Right, it's a container and not solid waste.
Yeah. And, and thus then, if we're able to do that, then it gives the, a little more authority to the city to address it. Now, I think, put anything in the legislature ends Friday?
I believe so. It's, it's pretty quickly.
So I would say that, you know, that's, that's a solution right there. Let's take it to legislature and try to put together some type of, of, of a piece of legislation that redefines the plastic bag.
Right.
And, I mean, it's worth a shot because let me put it, you know, we're all running out of ideas. You know, right now, the, the mesquite bushes are blooming plastic flowers and it does it every time.
They're yellow, white, red, beautiful colors.
And the thing is, it's noticeable everywhere we go. The thing is, we, we notice it, we know that people come in that notice it. And, you know, you go through construction sites, plastic bags, big, in fact, you go to construction sites, the plastic pieces get bigger. And so, yeah, it, it's just, it, it, and you're right, everybody, but I, I, I really believe in, in, in this instance is that we get together, we propose something, you know, and, and redefine the, the container itself to give us some, some type of authority. And what's the worst that legislation can, can do? You know, we have to do a resolution saying that we want to do this. But, you know, what's, what, what can the legislature do to just tell us no, tell us no on a lot of things? So but I think, I think that's where we, we need to start. But I'd like to get the council's opinion on this.
I think that's a good way to get around this, this issue because, yeah, as a city, we can't pass an ordinance because it'll just get overruled.
There's already, there's, there's precedent. I was unaware of that.
Two thousand and eighteen, I read. I'll look it up, yeah. Two thousand and eighteen.
That's right.
Counsel, what are your thoughts on that?
The thought, the thought that I have is that, well, first off, I drive by a couple of schools every day and I see what you see and it's disgusting. So I agree with you. But hypothetically, let's say the plastic bag was eliminated, those same people would be using paper bags and I know I'd be seeing paper bags everywhere. So it really boils down also, legislation is excellent, but I think a good citizen's act, good citizenship is something that we need to work on, you know, that's a-
Take pride.
Problem.
I agree. Thank you. I agree.
Any other comments on this?
Well, I, I just know that everybody traveling through here doesn't consider this home they think they're traveling through. This was a big write-up in the paper once that says if they don't feel like they're at home, they can just litter because it doesn't feel like home to them. So most of your solutions here is people are living here, they're thinking they're moving on from here, they're not going to be here throughout the whole time and, and that's some of the stuff that goes on in people's minds that I can litter and it's not my home. I'm from Mexico or I'm from Georgia and I'm going home, I could care less. I'm from anywhere other than Odessa, Texas, so I can throw this trash. Who cares? I'm not going to have to clean it up. So as citizens, we pay for this. Now, we get hit with ten cent bag charges, we get hit with this, we get hit with that. So no, I'm, I'm not for charging anybody for bags or anything, but somehow people got to realize this is their home. While they're here, they got to realize this is their home and they don't. And that's some of the problem right now is that, you know, I clean up my neighbor's trash when the wind blows. He cleans up my trash when the wind blows. That's the attitude that we need to quit, we need to clean up our own trash. And so that's what I do. I clean my neighbors up too when I see it in the alleyway and sometimes people just have to do it on their own. So you got to just take pride in where you're at. But I'm, I'm telling you right now, people just feel like they're just, they're not from here so they don't have to clean up. And as citizens here, sometimes you just need to open your mouth and just say, hey, it would be nice, buddy, if you picked that bag up before it gets too far gone and you're not having to chase it so far. I'll help you if you need some help. Sometimes just saying a word and that's, that's what it is and I'm, I'm sorry.
Just standing for your community, standing up for your community, that you love where you live. Absolutely.
I didn't mean to get on the high road.
No, no, it's all right. I'm just worried that you're going to get caught on the YouTube channel and you're going to be a Karen, man. That's the only thing that worries me.
Okay, so counsel, there's no any more discussion. We'll move on to item eleven.
Okay. Thank you.
And seeing that, thank you, since there is more business before the city council, I have a motion by council member.
In the absence of Ms. Swan or I move that we adjourn.
That's good. I like that. So I have a motion by Mr. Vasquez, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor and Katie Westen, aye. All opposed and Katie Westen, nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We are adjourned. We'll see you at six o'clock.